Call the meeting to order, the annual town meeting for 2019. If everyone would please rise. Ted Mulvahill will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gentlemen, please remove your caps. Ladies and gentlemen, your hand to your heart as we honor the colors of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of prayer and reflection.
Oh, God of nations and men, we pause at the outside of this meeting and come to you for help and light. May our counting and recording procedures promote good stewardship. Help us to fairly share our resources with others. May we respect all matters of confidentiality and do all in your spirit of generosity. Bless us with wise discretion, both now and forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Please be seated. I have a couple of announcements. The annual town report is out front. It's also available, I believe, online. Mr. Mizuko, is that right? The town report is available online. Please take one of these or look at it online. I think we didn't print as many copies as we have in the past because many people prefer to get that online. I'm told also that there'll be a grand reopening of the chapel sometime soon. Ms. Homewood, do we know the date yet?
The date is Saturday, but I don't have the date exactly.
Coming soon.
Coming soon.
To a cemetery near you.
Yes.
The main part of the annual town meeting, of course, is the budget. We, as the legislative body of the town, are called upon to pass the budget. And as most of you know, nothing gets spent but what we have first appropriated. So that will be the main event. We have some other motions that will come under several different articles that deal with housekeeping matters, certain authorizations that have to be done on an annual basis. We also will call for reports from different town offices. And I think, besides the budget, we're going to be dealing with CPA matters, Community Preservation Act matters. So there's a lot to do. I appreciate that everybody got here at a reasonable hour. And remember that we meet again Thursday at 7:30, same place. Until we're finished, we'll continue with our usual practice of Monday, Thursday, Monday, Thursday. Now, there's a couple of things that I want to mention before we get underway with business. One is a reminder to folks, there seems to be some confusion of the matter, but town meeting is not going to vote on an override. I know the newspapers at times have reported that town meeting decides whether there'll be an override. I'll say it now, and I may have to say it later. That's not on the warrant. It's not something that we vote on. It's nothing we have any say on. The selectmen put it on the ballot. The voters of the town will decide whether there's an override. So as much as people may want to discuss whether to have an override, that's really not proper discussion this evening, whether you're for or against it. We're here to deal with the articles that are on the warrant. The only way we touch upon the override, really, is when we take up Article Nine, which is the proposed contingency budget, which would take effect only if an override were approved. So if you had a big speech about the override, for or against, it's not going to be given here tonight because that's not really within the scope of the warrant. Although I suspect we'll touch upon it on the edges, maybe, as we talk about Article Nine and maybe some of the other budget matters. But I may have to ask people to come back to the topic under discussion rather than the pros and cons of an override itself. Also, the town meeting members received last week a letter that was signed by me and by the chairman of the Board of Selectmen and the chairman of the Finance Commission regarding a proposal to discuss or to use what's called a consent agenda at town meeting. A consent agenda is something that is used by many towns in the area. It's a way to use our time more efficiently by disposing more quickly of matters that are not controversial, that really take some time, but don't engender any real discussion. And if you remember, in the past, we have had probably eighty or more motions as we went through the budget. The way the budget is set out this year, I think it's about fifty motions. The idea of the consent agenda is to basically call off the list of the budget items, the departments, or the main items, there are fifty of them or so, in the budget. And unless somebody asks us to hold one of those items, we will simply lump them together and pass them with one motion. So if twenty-five of the fifty or so items, nobody asks to hold, then we'd simply call for a vote to approve those. That's the idea behind it, to save time, so we don't spend time on a motion that nobody really needs to talk about, many of which are perfunctory. We laid out in the letter how we propose to do this. Now, keep in mind, this is a proposal that we came up with as a way to make the system, the town meeting, work more efficiently. It's not a criticism of how town meeting goes, but over the years, we've heard people say how boring or slow or whatever town meeting can be, particularly when we're going through eighty or ninety-odd budget items. So we thought we would try this for the operating budget. And any member is free to hold an item, which means we would then come back to it, discuss it in the ordinary way. In some towns, it takes five members to actually hold a matter. As I said, we're proposing, at least for tonight, that it be one person could hold any item. Now, this is not something that's specifically called out in our rules, but actually, our rules don't say a whole lot about how we will debate things or how we discuss things, other than limitations on how long people can speak, when somebody moves the question, or what happens when somebody moves the question. We are confident that what we're proposing is certainly within the rules. We confirm that with town council. Since the letter went out, I've heard from several town meeting members, by phone, by email, in person, and different people have different ideas about whether this is a good idea or not. And as a preliminary matter, because I don't know that we want to spend an hour debating this, we're interested, I'm interested, and others who have proposed this along with me, are interested in whether the body thinks this is a good idea, thinks it's something we should put off. And if we put it off, frankly, I think we'd put it off for a year because I think the budget is really the type of matter that is most suited to this in terms of a lot of repetition. So this was done not to stifle discussion. It's proposed not to prevent anybody from having their say on a particular matter. I know some people think this is an attack on free speech or that it's violating our rules. We have, over the years, changed how we do different things. And this is just a suggested change that's allowed within the rules. But we're asking, we're interested in whether the body thinks this is a good idea. So as a preliminary matter, and it may be dispositive, by a show of hands of the members, those who think they would like to try the consent agenda on Article Eight.
Point of order.
Ms. Haley.
I ask to speak on this.
Mrs. Haley, if we get to that, you may. I understand that.
Anne Haley, District Four, Finance Commissioner. I ask to speak on this before a vote.
I wasn't asking for a formal vote. I was asking for a sense of the body by a show of hands. And if eighty percent or so said this is a bad idea, we wouldn't even have to spend time debating it, and we might accomplish the intent anyway. If the body thinks they want to debate it, we can open it up to debate. Mrs. Donahue, you rise for some point. There's nothing on the floor, really, but what is it behind you?
Hello, Helen Donahue, District Six. Before this meeting started, I got here on time for the purpose of requesting to speak on this. Mrs. Haley and I spoke to you in the hallway, and you inferred that you would allow each of us to speak before you raised any issue about who's for and who's against it. Because this is a proposal that requires discussion before a vote is taken. You said you would let us talk in the hallway.
Mrs. Donahue, just to be clear, and I don't really intend to debate you on it, I wrote your name and Mrs. Haley's name down and said that if we have a discussion, of course I would call on you at the beginning. I'm simply asking the sense of the body and the interests of time. If the body wants to debate this now, we can debate it. If the body thinks they don't even want to try it, they can say that. If overwhelmingly the body thinks they want to try it, then this is a matter that's within the...
It's unjust. It's unjust for town meeting to have to take a vote on it before town meeting members have heard a little discussion about it.
Mrs. Donahue, the moderator has responsibility for the procedure of the meeting and to oversee the procedure of the meeting. This is not in violation of any rule of town meeting. So if the body says they want to try it, we can try it. If it doesn't work out, we don't have to stick with it.
Mrs. Haley's proposal was to, would you please be kind enough to listen to Mrs. Haley, Mr. Moderator? Would you please be kind enough to allow her to speak?
There is nothing on the floor, but I'll let Mrs. Haley speak, and we'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Mrs. Haley, you had something you wanted to say.
Anne Haley, District Four. Folks, I apologize. I did not want to waste time doing this. I was as surprised as you were when you received a letter telling you that there will be a change in the rules in how you vote. The reason why I was surprised was because it was never brought before the Finance Commission. So if you think that the Finance Commission voted for this change in our rules, now you are wrong. The letter that you got makes some assumptions, and there was no presentation to you of rules of how we would go forward. It was very general. It didn't give you enough information. It got sent to town meeting members not seven days in advance, as we have always asked. I received it on Wednesday. Do the math. I'm suggesting that town meeting do the following. We have a rules committee. Though it was not created specifically for this reason, the committee can study our neighbors and the best practices from all other or any other town meetings, representative town meetings. Please make sure that that's the truth. The rules committee can come back in the fall and report its findings to town meeting, and then we can make a decision as to whether or not we want to try this next year. Please note that the letter was, that got sent to you, was very light on rules and procedures. If the moderator chooses not to bring together the rules committee, he can ask volunteers for any other kind of subcommittee tonight. And even if you get three or five people to try to work this out, then it would be much better than voting this evening on changing the way you look at your budget significantly. This is no little thing. It is a significant change. If we can look at it, form rules, make sure that we are comfortable with what is being given to us. For tonight, I propose that we do things the way we have always done them, and let's just get everything right, not rush it. And I think we'll be in much better shape if we do that. Thank you. And I, again, I apologize. I didn't want to take this time. We are so busy. But this is so important to your rights as a town meeting representative. You represent the people of this community. Don't, don't do this and make a mistake. Thank you.
Mrs. Haley, just so I'm clear, are you suggesting that this violates one of our rules?
No.
You're not? Okay. So it's just a procedural matter? Thank you. Mrs. Donahue, you wanted to speak. You were next on my list. You feel that you want to speak on this matter? Okay.
John Hall, District Six. This is an argument in favor of the kind of formal delay that Mrs. Haley has proposed and against doing a show of hands. The issue of whether we might be supportive of some version of this and whether we want to try it out on the basis of what was sent tonight, these are two different matters. But I can't imagine a way to do a show of hands where people can provide separate answers about whether they might ever be interested in this and whether they want to try it tonight. And I'm afraid that any attempt to get a show of hands is going to appear to be an answer on both questions when it almost certainly will not be. So I think a better way to proceed is, without any further discussion or vote-taking or informal shows of hands, is just go to something like what Mrs. Haley has proposed and come up with a good idea that is worthy of the body's consideration.
Mr. Burgess.
Chuck Burgess, District Four. Mr. Moderator, I wasn't aware of a rules committee. Could you be, I guess this is a point of information, could you elaborate a little bit or tell us about what our rules committee is and who's on it? Thank you.
The bylaw that governs town meeting provides for a rules committee made up of one member from every district. In the years that I've done this, I've called for volunteers. We've had some, but we've never been able to get one from every district. I suspect this year, there'll be more interest in it. And hopefully, when we conclude the town meeting, anybody interested can send me an email and include their district number, and I'll appoint a rules committee. And this is fine if people want to discuss it, you know, that way. There are other things that I think we, and members would feel, we might want to change how we do certain things. This was proposed as a suggestion to streamline things. If we debate it for the next hour, of course, we won't streamline it, and I appreciate the concerns. Just so that everybody knows, what we're doing does not contravene in any way our rules. It may contravene the way we've done things, but if we did everything all the time the way they have always been done, we would not be doing town meeting the way we've been doing it for the last many years. In other words, we wouldn't have slides, we wouldn't have handouts, we wouldn't have this, we wouldn't have that. It's a proposal to make a change that we thought would be better for it, but if the body doesn't want to do it, the body doesn't have to do it. So let me ask, on a show of hands, those who are willing to try this tonight, raise, and I'm asking for tonight, I understand that some would say this is a big thing, maybe we shouldn't do this for all time. We're free to change our procedure, and in doing so, we wouldn't be violating any rules. Those who want to try it tonight, just show of hands. Those who want to put it off. All right. We have more who are in favor than want to put it off. Let's, we can revisit that in a little while, and we get to Article Eight. By the way, let's not, why don't we get through Articles One through Seven, and we can see if we're willing to even consider it. By then, everybody may be exhausted, everybody may be ready to go, everybody may decide this is the worst idea ever to come down the pike, or the best idea. We're trying to do, just as all of you are working for the Betterment of Town Meeting, we're trying to do the same thing. So we're open to suggestions, we're open to comments, but right now, we count more people willing to try it. So let's see when we get there. Now, let's go to the warrant. Article One, I have a motion from the selectmen, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen that the annual report of the town officials of the town of Norwood be received and accepted as printed.
Mr. Bishop is waiving that annual report. All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote on that motion. All those in favor that the annual report be accepted, received and accepted as printed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That is carried. That's one of those non-controversial motions. Are there any other town committees, town boards, or town officials who wish to make a report to the town meeting at this time? Mr. Greeley, you going to make the CPC report when we get to that article?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you're farther down the list. Is there something else you want to speak to?
Joe Greeley, District Six. I have my hat on right now for the Norwood Trails Advisory Committee. I apologize, we will have a report, a double-sided document at the door on Thursday, along with our townwide map. We've been working for the last year and a half to try to dust off some of the trails, literally and figuratively, in town, and we hope the information that we provide at the door Thursday night will be helpful. We do have a newsletter going out, and we hope to receive a lot of feedback, and we appreciate all that we've received so far. That's the Norwood Trails Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other boards or committees? All right. So, Mr. Greeley, we're having a little trouble, by the way, those of us up front. We're told that the usual speakers aren't working tonight, and so it seems like we don't know what you're saying. It might be because sometimes we don't know what you're saying. And I apologize in advance. So you will have something Thursday night you hope for people to pick up, but otherwise, that's your report.
The Trails Subcommittee.
Thank you. Motion to accept the Trails Subcommittee report by Mr. Pachakowski, seconded by Mr. Reese. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, that is carried. Nobody else? No other committees? The FinCom will make their report later on, is that right? Mr. Slater, you're going to have a more detailed report for us when we take up the money articles.
Correct, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. All right. Then, nothing more under Article One. We'll move on to Article Two. Motion by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen that the town treasurer and collector of taxes, as collector of taxes, be and hereby is authorized to use all means of collecting taxes, which a town treasurer may use according to law when acting as the collector of taxes.
All right. This is one of our annual housekeeping matters. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. The motion to authorize the collector, treasurer and collector of taxes to take the usual action that a town treasurer may use when acting as collector of taxes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That is carried. Article Three, we have a motion by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen that the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to accept and enter into contracts for the expenditure of any funds allotted by the Commonwealth and/or county for the construction, reconstruction, and improvement of public roads under the provisions of Section 34, Chapter 90 of the General Laws, or any provisions of law enacted and amendment thereof, or in any addition thereto.
All right. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote on the motion under Article Three regarding the acceptance of, and entering into contracts for funds allocated under Chapter 90 for roadway improvement, reconstruction, et cetera. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That is carried. We move on to Article Four. Is this the Board of Selectmen or the FinCom? This is the FinCom. Mr. Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the town hereby votes to allow the treasurer from time to time to enter into compensating balance agreements with banks in accordance with general law, Chapter 44, Section 53F, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, or to take any other action in the matter, parentheses, in petition of town treasurer and tax collector.
All right. Under Article Four, another housekeeping matter. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That is carried. Article Five, Finance Commission. Mr. Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the town hereby authorize the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue of the financial year beginning July 1, 2019, in accordance with the provisions of general laws, Chapter 44, Section 4, and to issue a note or notes, therefore payable within one year, and to review any note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year, in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 17. Again, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Slater.
This, as you noted in the previous one, is just one of our housekeeping articles, and I believe this is the one which gives the treasurer the ability to go out for bond anticipation notes.
All right. This involves borrowing and requires a two-thirds vote, the potential for borrowing. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote. Again, requires a two-thirds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That has carried unanimously. The next one, Article Six. Mr. Slater.
Mr. Moderator. Voted, recommended by the Board of Selectmen that the town hereby votes to authorize the following revolving fund spending limits for fiscal year 2020 in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E, one-half, for the purpose of funding programs administered by Council of Aging. Spending limit, $125,000. And Norwood Public Library, spending limit, $50,000. Again, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Slater.
This is an article which gives both the Council of Aging and the Public Library the right to spend money within their own revolving fund accounts. I know when I came in earlier, there was a report from the Council of Aging. I don't know whether there is one from the library. But this, again, is a housekeeping article which gives them the ability to spend money for their, for the purposes of each of these departments.
Thank you. You read this as being recommended by the Board of Selectmen, and I understand they may agree with this, but this is the Finance Commission's motion, correct?
Correct. Sorry about that. I was ready for a batum.
It involves, all right. Any discussion on this?
There is a handout from the library.
I'm sorry? From the library?
There is a handout.
Thank you. Handout from the library and this out on the table for those who want it? Okay. Ms. Donnelly Matthews? Wait for the microphone, please.
Julie Donnelly Matthews, District Three. Just a point of information to Mr. Slater, through you, Moderator. What was the spending limit prior to this year for the revolving fund? Or is it new?
I believe they were the same last year as they are this year. I believe they changed several years ago.
Mr. McQuade was, wants to take that, I think, Mr. Slater. He has some more detailed information, I think.
The library was $50,000 last year. I believe the Council on Aging was $100,000.
Okay, great. I just wanted to know.
They're raising more money now, so they want the ability to spend it on their programs.
Great. Thank you.
Anything further? All right. On this, which is, we're back to a simple majority. Authorizing revolving fund spending limits for the new fiscal year 2020. Council on Aging, $125,000. Norwood Public Library, $50,000. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. We move on now to Article Seven. Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission, indefinite postponement.
All right. And that's because we have no matters that require appropriation, is that right?
Correct.
All right. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote. With respect to Article Seven, the motion from the Finance Commission is for indefinite postponement. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Okay. Now, we now get into the budget, and before we start on Article Eight, Mr. Slater, you have a report and some slides and so forth for us?
I do, Mr. Moderator.
All right. Please proceed when you're ready.
Thank you. This is the annual State of the Town report that Finance Commission does every year, and this is sort of breaking new ground for us because we're not only going to be presenting, as we are in Article Eight, a base budget, we're also going to be presenting a contingency budget in Article Nine, which we'll get to later, later in the session. But again, this presentation is specifically related to the base budget. So, first thing I'd like to do is talk about some of the trends we've had in receipts over the years. If you look at where our nonutility revenue comes from, I mean, the bulk of it does come from, come from taxes. And, you know, the, as much as we complain about Proposition Two and a Half, it's the only source of revenue which we know in any given year that we're going to be getting more money in the following year, you know, simply because of the Two and a Half, Two and a Half requirements. We don't know the same thing for state aid, or for departmental receipts, or for surplus. I think that's going to be shown in some of the subsequent slides that I do. The table, the next slide, shows it a little bit, a little bit easier for people, and the bottom line is that we are going to be having slightly more revenue this year, not as much as we would have had in past years if we had, you know, additional surpluses, an example, and if our departmental receipts were a little bit more robust. But, you know, we will be getting a slight increase in revenues. In terms of receipt history, look at departmental receipt history. Went up a couple of years ago because we had an increase in ambulance fees, but the bottom line is that it's flat, and it has been for a couple of years. There are several fees in here which are somewhat volatile. I mean, they depend on the economy. Building permit fees certainly are one of those. Excise tax, auto excise tax, you know, certainly, again, is one which is volatile. So, these are things which, on a year-to-year basis, sometimes it's difficult to count on. Now, if you look at the next slide, that's state aid. State aid, for a number of years, really hadn't gone up that much in a given year, maybe a couple of percent. We were lucky this year, because of additional education Chap. 70 money, we did get about $1.3 million more than we did the previous year, which is about $1 million more than we anticipated. I mean, that's great for this year. We're certainly not expecting $1 million of additional state aid in any other years. We'll just have to see what happens, you know, with the budget, and particularly how they look in the legislature to, to redevelop the educational spending formula. But, you know, again, it's best when we look at our receipts over the years, whether it's departmental receipts, or state aid, or whatever. When you do your budget, to look at what's done in the past, you know, understand what's in the, you know, what potentially is in the budget, but also to be conservative, because you don't want to put too much in a, too much of an assumption in the budget, and then you find out down the road that you're going to have a hole in the budget because those assumptions just didn't come, come to form. Tax increases, this is the tax levy increase that you see with Proposition Two and a Half. In FY '20, it's $1,841,000. We also assumed $900,000 in new growth. Again, that's a number which varies over the years. It's somewhat economy-dependent. $900,000 is an average over the last few years. We think that's a safe, conservative assumption. The next slide looks to how we've used reserves in the past to balance the budgets, and you will note that we really didn't use that much this year, and the major reason, as we've talked about in the past, and I'm not going to bore you with everything again, is we simply didn't have as much in, in free cash as we had in previous years. So, how have we used our reserves? If you look at the slide on free cash, you know, it's a significant reduction, you know, it went down over $3 million from what we had in the past. There's a couple of reasons for that. Again, I've talked about them in the past, I'll go over them quickly. We had significantly lower receipts than what we estimated for water and sewer. Our building permits were way down. Some of our, I think our excise taxes were a little bit lower, but not much, but they certainly weren't, weren't, weren't much of an increase. The new growth wasn't as high as we originally had estimated, so that all ate into free cash, along with the change in state law in the Municipal Modernization Act, which didn't allow us to use bond premiums and free cash, but it had to go back to reducing the amount of that particular bond issue. Stabilization fund, as many old-time town meeting members recall, took a hit in FY '14 when we took $3 million out of stabilization to finance a portion of the DPW, and there's been an agreement between the Selectmen and the Finance Commission that, over a period of several years, we're going to put that money back into stabilization to bring it back to where it was, and then we'll add more money. And I believe we're in year six of that seven-year program. So, we're close to where we were six years ago. We still have a way to go. If you look at the reasons why we want to retain reserves, you know, I'm not going to, you know, dwell on this, I mean, I talked about it before, but the one thing I really want to emphasize very strongly is the necessity to have strong reserves, to have that recognized by the, by the rating agencies, because, you know, we do hope to not only maintain a AA-plus rating, which is the second highest that you can get, but we're also looking to try to get a AAA rating, which is the highest. There are several communities that have that, most of them don't, and when you're looking to do major bondings in the future, particularly several years down the road, if in fact we do decide to go ahead with the Cokely Middle School, you know, 25, or 50, or 100 basis points on your interest rate could mean, you know, potentially, you know, several million dollars of reduced interest costs during the course of the project. The next slide sort of shows what we have remaining for surplus. It's a little busy, I know it's difficult to read, but essentially, you know, we're going to be using all our recurring surpluses, you know, such as cemetery receipts is one example. All of those are going into the budget. We're not using that much free cash because we don't have a lot of free cash. We used some at the special town meeting, about $200,000 there, and we're going to be using free cash primarily for two purposes in the special town meeting. The first one is to pay for some capital expenses. That's $486,000. And we're also, because the Finance Commission, after town meeting, voted several years ago to purchase the Forbes Hill property, the Finance Commission voted that until we decide what to do, at least for the first two years, that we would use free cash to pay for the interest and operating expenses for that building, so as not to have a drain on either the school or the general government budget. So, that's $509,000. Hopefully, you know, if we get everything straightened out with Forbes Hill, we won't be needing that, but we're certainly setting it aside under the assumption that, you know, at least some of it, or if not all of it, will be needed in FY '20. So, what that did, it had left $504,000 in free cash, which is consistent with the financial policies which we're developing, which should be finalized very shortly, and, and our stabilization funds, so we have about $5.8 million in reserves. Looking at budget trends, it's roughly a third, a third, a third between schools, general government, and shared costs. That's shown as a pie chart. If you want to look at a bar chart, which I think may show things a little bit better, the schools are the major portion of our budget, followed by general government. And if you're looking at shared costs, the three areas that are the highest, where we spend the most money, are retirement costs, insurance costs, and, and our debt service. Much of that debt service, by the way, is in utilities. It's not a debt service which is financed by, you know, by taxes. Looking at shared costs, you know, it's unfortunately not a pretty picture in several areas. Health insurance costs, they were flat for a couple of years, which, which saved us. You know, if they, if they were going up at the rates they were, we certainly would have been where we were today, you know, last year or even two years ago. But even, even with a couple of years of flat health insurance, you know, between 2000, FY 2015 and FY '20, we've gone up almost 20% and a significant increase this year. Debt service, you know, as we always say, you know, a dollar less of debt service is a dollar more for the town and for schools. And what the Finance Commission has done, and I think this is consistent with what's in our financial policies, is that for, you know, we don't want to put any more money in debt service than what's being taken off, you know, debt which is being retired. And between FY '20 and FY '21, because the debt that, you know, that we decide to finance in this meeting will, will come up in FY '21, I think we're going to show that what we're putting on is roughly equal to the amount that's coming off, so the actual debt in FY '21 will be pretty close to what's in FY '20. The, I should have mentioned it first, what these represent, these, this represents existing debt. You know, any new debt that we put on obviously will add in FY '21, FY '22, et cetera, et cetera. But the intent is, the amount of debt which we add for FY '21 will be roughly equivalent to what we have in FY '20, so that won't be any further burden on our budget. If you look at retirement costs, those have steadily gone up. They continue to go up, you know, between FY '14 and FY '20, it's almost a 50% rise in our retirement cost from $3.5 million to $5.2. That's to be expected. You know, we have more people retiring, people live longer. I will say, though, that our retirement system is one of the best-funded in the state. We're in, I think, the top 20% of the, not top 20%, top 20 of 300-some-odd cities and towns in Massachusetts. So, we're doing very well, but again, you know, this is a burden to us. The next slide shows, you know, all the revenues and the distribution of those revenues. It's $196 million in total. If you reduce shared costs, you know, utility budgets had left $81 million and some change left. Doing a true 55-45 allocation, that's the numbers on the bottom left, gives you a slightly different number than the actual FY '20 budget, because we decided that all the, all the, all the money that was dedicated to Forbes Hill that went out of debt service, we gave that to the, to the school system. We didn't divide that 55-45, so that was a benefit to the schools. So, let's look at some of the challenges facing each sector of town government. You know, most of these, you know, I've, I've talked about, you know, health insurance, we expect this to increase. Retirement will increase as population ages. Debt payment relief, if we're disciplined, and I truly have to ask people, you know, to be disciplined, and it was easy to vote for projects when it's something you don't have to pay for today, but down the road, we do pay for these, and we have to, you know, show some restraint. Terms of general government, snow and ice budget, which we're trying to address, it's much higher than it was a few years ago. It still isn't enough in a, in an average year. We're taking some steps to, to adjust that. Rolling stock should be in the operating budget, and not just rolling stock, but also, you know, other things on the town side and the school side are being paid out of capital. They should be in both the operating budgets. And we need more money for our roadways. We've estimated that we should get twice as much money to fix our roads as we do get from the state, and that's trying to be addressed also. From the school side, you know, the unfunded mandates, you know, it's easy to, to tell you to do something, but they never seem to come up with the money to allow us to do it. And, you know, the, the need to add programs to keep up with the times, to help our students and to be, you know, in line with some of the other districts. General challenges, you know, reserves, I mentioned that, those are key. Good to get a better credit rating, and better credit rating is important. Long-range planning, I'm not going to really dwell on this very long, but it's a couple of things, you know, we, we did do a five-year projection in our last, in our budget balancing that helped us develop, you know, the plan that we'll present in Article Nine, but that is a living document, you know, that five-year plan will be updated as appropriate, and I think that's the way to go. Legitimate needs, again, not pie in the sky things. Long-term stability, it's not only important to the general government side, it's particularly important to the school side, is that trying to develop a five-year strategic plan. Without funding stability, it's difficult to not only develop but implement such a plan. And our new financial policies should be ready soon. I think it's something that all three boards have worked on very carefully, and I think it's something that the rating agencies, you know, will look at very favorably. So, just for a couple of final considerations, we've talked in the, about having a townwide facility staff. Discussions are still ongoing. Hopefully, something will be finalized by fall town meeting, and we can implement that. Should we combine other school and town facilities, such as IT, finance, human resources, that's something else to look at. Capital planning, you know, should be done early, you know, so that we can understand the implications to the budget. OPEB liability, you know, is something that we now have to carry on our books. We're only about, what, about $153 million in debt in the red on that, you know, 153, 155, what's a couple of million dollars. So, that is something that we do have to fund. And lastly, you know, I hate to be a broken record, but, you know, the have-to-have versus the nice-to-have funds, we have to show that discipline, because many times you take a small item, and it's like, oh, it's not a big deal, not a, it's not really that significant, but you add up all those small items, they add up to a big item, and that presents us limitations in what we can do with our budget. So, with that, Mr. Moderator, I'm ready to go into the budget.
All right. Before we do that, Mr. McQuade wanted to address the body about some of the more mundane aspects of the budget book. Mr. McQuade, who is our chief financial officer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, if you, if you could, would mind turning to Section 4A. So, what we did this year is, we presented the budget in, by UMAS code. So, this is a new accounting system for the town of Norwood. We've been on the statutory accounting system, it started in 1920s, I think, and, and starting in the 1970s, the, the Commonwealth prescribed a uniform Massachusetts accounting system, and this is where they want all towns to, how they want all towns to be reporting. So, so this year, we're not only converting our accounting system to the UMAS code, but as you, you'll recall, last fall, this town meeting authorized $1.7 million to invest in... you'll recall, last fall, this town meeting authorized $1.7 million to invest in a Tyler-Munis system. So they kind of sound the same, a UMAS accounting system, Uniform Massachusetts Accounting, and Munis, which is the software. But that 4A is kind of the summary page, this is how you'll be seeing the summary of the budget, so it's broken down by various sections of general government and education, and then some shared costs. If you flip to 4B, we tried to give you a look of what the budget looks like by department. So in this look, the Board of Selectmen's budget is first, and the General Manager, Finance Commission, et cetera. So if you wanted to quickly look down and see what department's spending, you would flip to Section 4B. If you actually flipped to Section 4C, this is the voting level. So this is what's recommended by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And there's actually, within the operating budget, there's three categories. So if you're on Page 4C1, you'll see the Board of Selectmen, and it has a category called OO1, which is salaries, OO2, which is all other operating expenses, and if they had any capital items, it would be OO6. So what we'll be voting, when the moderator asks people to vote on the Selectmen's budget, we're actually voting for the, in this case, those two lines, much as like we did in the previous year. You may recall, we had P accounts, which was the detail accounts, that they rolled up to higher levels. So a pretty similar system. But if you flip to 4D, that's where the detailed budgets are. So I suspect that most of you, as we go through to vote on items, would actually probably prefer to be looking at 4D because you could have the totals of OO1, which in this case is 141,812, and the total of OO2, which is $9,800, for a total Selectmen budget of 151,612. So that's where you'd have detail, which would, you know, possibly generate questions that you might have. And as you can see, if you look at the detailed budget numbers, like salary full-time, it's a really long number, 011, 221, 511, 600. So, and of course, like any account number, it has a lot of meaning. But to town meeting members, I think the easiest way to, if you had a question on, for instance, $7,500 credit on Line 7. So see the lines on the left that says 1 through 23. Those are actually the lines from the Excel sheet that this was developed on. So I think if you had a question on that $7,500 item, which I'm sure actually someone will, you would refer to that as, "Mr. Moderator, I have a question on Line 7." So if you just flipped, you know, randomly down, you can see that those numbers continuously grow, those Excel lines. And I also want to just point out, if you could please turn to Page 4D-24. The schools have exceptional reporting requirements for DESI. So we wanted to show you what their budget will look like in future years, so that starts on 4D-24. We have no numbers in there yet because the school committee hasn't formulated their budget in this format yet, because we basically, overall, we added something like 4,000 accounts, many of which belong to the schools, because they have to report in a much more complex manner. So we laid this out to show you that, in general, it's going to be by district-wide, which generally is the superintendent's office and things that they control that affect the whole district. And then the budgets will be by school, so it'll be the Bolsh, and then the Cleveland, and then eventually the middle school and the high school. Their actual budget starts on Page 4D-53, and for this purpose, we use the old account numbers because that's how they've budgeted. And the reason that it's, the account numbers, in one sense, for this year, don't make a difference in the school budget because we do vote a bottom-line budget on the schools, whereas on the general government and shared costs, we had to provide you with the new UMAS numbers because that's actually the way we're going to control the voting. So I know that's a lot to take in, but I think hopefully that'll help you, guide you through this.
Thank you, Mr. McQuade. Okay, we're going to take up the budget, and I said I'd return to the question of the idea of a consent agenda. And not to debate it over and over, but certainly there may be questions. Let me lay out how we contemplated doing this. We would call, and several of us here have a checklist, so for example, for the Selectmen, which is number 122, I would call out the bottom line on that page, 4D1, 151, 612. General Manager, I would call out 703,458. As I call down those, if anybody wants to hold the matter, they would yell, "Hold", and we would check off that that's one that we would return to. And if at the end of calling the list, which is three pages, we take the ones that have not been held, ask for a motion to approve those based upon the amounts that have been, that are, we've called out the total amounts, and the motions are, the breakdowns are being put up there, so as we go through them. If there's any question, we can make those breakdowns available. But the amount that you'd be asked to vote on in a combined motion, if we take that route, would be the number that I had called, which is the number, the bottom line on each, for each section, anyway. So for the Selectmen, it's made up of two numbers, salaries and operating expenses. But our motion, actually, and I have printed motions in front of me in the usual way, our motion is for $151,612. And if we're discussing it, Ms. Bartlett can put up on the screen the breakdown on that that matches what the actual motion is. So that's what the plan is, and if, we also said in the letter, if somebody missed something and they wanted to come back after we've gone through the list and they forgot to hold something, our view would be, of course, let's go back. This is something we're trying, and it may work out well, and it may be that by the end of the night, all of us, including me, think this is a wonderful idea to put off for 10 or 20 years. So we'll see. Now, Mr. Riley, you had a question on this, or?
Mike Riley, District 1, I have a motion on this matter, seconded by Mr. Hall. And the motion is not to do that this evening. Refer this matter to the Town Meeting Rules Committee. Have them determine whether this is a good idea, and if it is a good idea, come back to us with a specific proposal that we then vote on after a debate. And if I could address my motion?
Yes.
The, I don't have a problem with consent agenda. I worked as a trial lawyer and tried a lot of corporate cases. I dealt with them. I'm on a, answer to a board now, and they use consent agendas. They're a good idea, they're an efficient idea. I have a problem with the way it's being proposed here. The central function of town meeting is financial oversight. That's the most important thing we do, is look at the money. We all know, as a practical matter, that people sit here, and as they're going through these things line by line, thoughts occur and questions get asked. And sometimes it can be very annoying. We've all been annoyed at other people's questions, we're never annoyed at our own questions. But many times, people ask a question, or raise a question, just, "Could you tell me about this?", and all of a sudden, you find out something that you're glad you knew, and you're glad you found out about it. And the proposal that says we should all review this line by line before we get here and decide which ones we want to hold, and stand up and say, "Hold", and if we don't say it, I know tonight, we'll get a second chance, but, you know, the procedure is if you don't say it, it's gone, I suggest that's not a good idea. That's not us carrying out our key proposal. And I know this is made in good faith, and I don't think anyone's trying to play games here, it's done for purposes of efficiency, but efficiency isn't the only goal, and it's not even the most important goal. I also did a little looking into how these are used in other towns, because the letter mentions that other towns are using it, and that's certainly true. But what I found is consistent with my experience with consent agendas, they're not usually, they're infrequently used this way and this broadly. If you look at other towns, you know, I looked at Acton, and they said it's generally used for routine, non-controversial actions, like road acceptances, annual reauthorizations for revolving accounts, like the motion we just had, that sort of thing. Wilbraham says they use it for housekeeping matters. Provincetown uses it for things like the Cape Cod Greenland Fly Control District Assessment. And in Provincetown, they come out with a list ahead of time, like our yellow sheet, and explain why each item is on the consent agenda and why it should be done that way. And in most, in many towns, the list is given ahead of time of particular motions, not the entire budget, and say yay and aye as you go along, but there are certainly particular line items in our budget where most of us would agree, it's probably non-controversial, and if we had a list ahead of time and we looked at it, we'd probably say, yeah, that's okay. But I'd suggest not as a blanket matter. The procedure that's proposed here is different from the procedure a lot of other towns use. For example, Westwood is one of the towns mentioned in the letter. The town meeting materials from Westwood say, the way their consent agenda works is, during the moderator's reading of the budget line items, voters wishing to question a particular budget may do so, discussion may then take place. That's basically what we do now. That's not very different from what we're doing now. And if we were just talking about doing away the necessity for Mr. Hearn to ask Mr. Slater to read the motion, that's certainly something we could talk about. But it's very different from what's being proposed here. In Canton, they have a vote on each time, on whether to use the consent agenda. In many cases, and in many towns, the approval of the consent agenda requires more than a majority. Situat requires two-thirds, Linfield requires four-quarters, Milton requires two-thirds approval. So in general, there are a lot of ways to go about a consent agenda, and the way that's been proposed here is, I suggest, the broadest and the biggest surrendering of our financial oversight. And my suggestion is that before we do that, there's not a rush here. We have a Town Meeting Rules Committee, and I understand it's never been that active. This is probably a good time to be active. Mr. Hearn threatened to appoint me to it, and that's fair, I guess I'd ask for it if I raise this issue.
I promise to appoint you.
Fair enough. And I promise to accept. But I think we ought to think about it, I think this is our key function that we serve, it's the key thing we do as town meeting, and I think, and again, I don't think anyone's working in bad faith here, but frankly, for the people who we are overseeing, to say, "We have a good idea here, without a vote, we're going to suggest that you don't watch what we're doing as closely as we could", I don't think it's a good idea. And I'll just leave you with this idea. And again, I don't think anyone's trying to be sneaky, but the fact of the matter is if you're in a board, or you're working for the town, and you're proposing increasing expenditures and authorizations, it is healthy for you to think that that particular authorization is going to be considered by everybody at town meeting, and they're going to look at that line item, and if they have a question, they're going to ask about it. That's a healthy discipline for everybody, and I'd suggest we should preserve it. So I would ask, the motion that I've made is that it not happen today, that it go to the Rules Committee, and the Rules Committee come back with a recommendation, and we vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. I do want to point out, and I know, I'm familiar with the Milton approach, we tried, you're right, we tried to take a broad approach and to allow one member to require discussion and debate. Milton requires five members. So we thought this, that was about as democratic as you get, if one person wants to discuss something, we can. The members have had, for two weeks, most of the members have had the budget book and the opportunity. Whether they've studied or not, I don't know, but, and we, you know, your point is well taken. So, and Mr. Riley told me he was going to bring this motion, and I recognize him for that purpose. Again, we are not wedded to a particular idea. We propose something, and ultimately, it's what the body wants to do. It's a, it was not done to rush it, it was simply to say, "Let's not spend a lot of time on things that nobody really wants to spend time on, let's get to the more important things." But Mr. Riley's motion is that the Town Meeting Moderator not implement the consent agenda outlined in the letter of May 6th, that the Town Meeting Rules Committee be charged with studying the consent agenda process and with making a recommendation as to whether or not town meetings should adopt that process, and if so, exactly what consent agenda procedures should be followed. Three, that any adoption of consent agenda be implemented by amending the town meeting rules after debate and vote at a town meeting. And that's one approach to take. Other, as you say, other ones voted, I think you said some voted every year whether to do it, is that right? Which is essentially what we're trying to do here. But, okay. Let's, so on Mr. Riley's motion, which was seconded by Mr. Hall, Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Jean Taylor, District 8. I wrote this out before the meeting even started, because I was not in favor of the way this was presented to town meeting, so I'm standing up in support of Mr. Riley's motion. I respectfully disagree with the consent agenda approach being introduced to town meeting at this particular meeting and in the way it was presented to us. Receiving a notice, and I don't think it was done vindictively or anything like that, I don't mean it that way. Receiving a notice five or so days before a meeting is an adequate notice. It also strongly, I also strongly believe that it needs more than signature from Selectmen, FinCom, or our town moderator. It needs to be looked at, studied, and then brought to town meeting at a later meeting and voted on by us as town meeting members. We have a bylaws, a Rules Committee, and I think we should use it. I think it's a great thought, and I agree that it sounds like something that could help us move along, but not before research and not experimented at this particular budget meeting. I've been a town meeting member for many, many years. I've spent many hours here. A lot of people work full-time, they don't have time to look at their budget book and look at every line item before they get to this town meeting. So I think it's very rushed and very hard and very difficult to tell. Some of our newer town meeting members come in here, get home, "I want you to look at every single line." I've never looked at every single line, and if that's a bad thing to say up here, I'm sorry, I just don't always have time to do all of them. So I stand up in support of this, and I hope that you'd reconsider if you had voted to try it at this particular meeting. And I don't like to get up and talk, which is why I'm probably red-faced, and my husband will get mad at me, "Don't ever say you don't like to talk." But, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Mr. Plasko?
District 1, move the question, Mr. Moderator.
All right, I'm moving the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Question has been moved. So, on the question of whether to adopt Mr. Riley's motion, which would essentially put the idea of the consent agenda off to another future town meeting, and would request the Rules Committee to study that process and make a recommendation on it, and that the adoption of a consent agenda be implemented by amending town meeting rules after debate and vote. Am I paraphrasing that correctly? On that, all those in favor, please say aye. On that, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. The ayes have it, and we now move on to the budget under the more traditional approach. Let me say this. I will say this. We offered this. We understand, and I, for 15-plus years, have tried to serve town meeting. If town meeting makes its wishes known, as you just did, based on the motion, that's perfectly fine with me. So let's buckle our seatbelts and get going on the budget. Mr. Slater?
General Government Selectmen. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated: $151,612.
Mr. Slater, anything on that?
No, Mr. Moderator.
All right. The motion with respect to General Government Selectmen is for $151,612. Any discussion? Mr. Greeley?
Joe Greeley, District 6. In spite of what we just voted relative to this page in the budget book, I just want to point out and highlight the fact that there were literally hundreds of hours that have been put into this book. But along the lines of a consent budget discussion, I know we just voted on that, but this is a perfect page. If you compare this page that we're looking at right now with Sections 8A and 8B in the book, you don't have, obviously, we're not going to be able to do it now, but if there was ever a view of the strategy to every one of these departments, those three sections, the page that we're looking at right now, for example, and the corresponding pages in Sections 8A and 8B, if you want to, you know, from the standpoint of a consensus vote, if we want to be efficient, this is a challenge both to the front of the room and the town meeting members as well. We all need to be better informed, and we have to ask better questions. That's my own humble, personal opinion. And in my mind, the way we can do that is becoming better aware of what's actually in the book and in our hands. So from a town meeting challenge standpoint, I throw out the challenge that we town meeting members need to look at all, you know, basically all three of those sections before we can, in order to be better informed at what's being proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the Board of Selectmen budget? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote on the motion for $151,612. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. And that has carried unanimously. The next item, General Manager, Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I also wanted to mention that Mr. Donnelly from the...
I don't think you're... Try now. It's on now.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Is it on? No.
Is there a budget item for new microphones?
Any better?
Nope.
This'll be shorter than the consent agenda if the Chairman of the FinCom can't speak.
I remember that. Assuming I don't knock everything off the table, I'll use this one. I also just wanted to quickly note that Mr. Donnelly from the Finance Commission is not available today. He's out of state on some family business.
All right. So on 123, General Manager?
Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated: $703,458.
Any discussion? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote on the motion. General Manager, $703,458. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next item, Finance Commission, Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the following purposes: a total of $119,084.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote. The motion, and I'm not going to read the numbers again. Mr. Slater just called it, and it's up on the screen, so I will dispense with that. On the motion for the Finance Commission, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. Number 135, Finance and Accounting, Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the following purposes: a total of $339,975.
Any discussion? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote. Number 135, Finance and Accounting, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next account, 141, Assessors, Mr. Slater?
Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the following purposes: a total of $488,810.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. The motion, number 141, Assessors, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. Number 145, Treasurer, Mr. Slater?
Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums, excuse me, that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the following purposes: a total of $582,484.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Number 145, Treasurer, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next item, 151, Town Council, Mr. Slater?
Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sum be raised by taxation and appropriated for the following purpose: $246,600.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. The motion with respect to 151, Town Council, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. Number 152, Human Resources, Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated: a total of $378,103.
Any discussion on this? Yes, Ms. Newby.
Kelly Newby, District 5. This question is to Mr. Mazuko, the Town Manager, through you, Mr. Moderator. There have been a lot of questions in the community as to why the Human Resources employment budget has gone up by something like $60,000 and why that transfer was done from your general management expenses. If you could just explain that so that could put those questions to rest, that would be awesome.
All right. Mr. Mazuko?
Sure. I'm not sure what you were referring to by general management expenses. The HR budget is up. We reallocated a vacant part-time benefited position from the accounting office to the HR office. So by moving that position from the accounting office to the HR office, where we think it's going to be of more value to us, that's the bulk of the increase in that salaries.
Thank you. Anything further on this? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote for 152, Human Resources. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next account, number 155, Information Technology, Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated: a total of $993,553.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Ms. Newby?
Kelly Newby, District 5. This is a question through you, Mr. Moderator, for Mr. Mazuko, the Town Manager. Could you, I have two questions, actually. One, could you clarify what part of the total budget this information technology budget covers? I know it doesn't cover the schools, but is this the entire general government and Light Department and everything else that we support? Or is that costed out separately into different budgets?
Mr. Mazuko?
So this is IT support for general government, and that actually does include part of the schools. We have always borne the cost of our accounting system on the general government ledger. We've never charged the school department for that, so that's included in here as well. There's not much of the Light Department included in here. They bury their own, they cover their own IT costs. The allocation you'll see here is that IT actually reimburses the town for the portion of software that the IT uses, mainly our accounting system. That number will likely grow. So it's a majority general government, and it's a couple functions in the school department. The Light Department reimburses for its IT costs. Four budgets of them separately in their own budget.
And then one more question, Mr. Moderator, for Mr. Mazuko through you. What this budget, like as a percentage of our overall budget, seems very low in terms of things we can do to drive efficiencies. Are there any plans to increase this budget and start purchasing more software and stuff to drive automations and reduce human capital?
So the short answer is yes. We have historically had a low level of investment in IT overall, up until recently, where we invested $1,007,000 into our new system. It's important to note that while we can drive efficiencies and we can see some staff allocations, we are not an IT organization. The majority of the functions we provide require a body. So if you think of general government, police, fire, and public works, the best technology in the world isn't going to, at least as of today or in the foreseeable future, reduce the need to have a police officer or firefighter or a DPW worker. We tend to try to do IT on the cheap, and sometimes that's good, sometimes that's bad. I would like to see more IT investment in the future. The full rollout of the Munis software system, once we're fully implemented, we'll see some efficiencies. The challenge is sometimes we like to see, "Great, you're investing in new software. Does that mean you can cut bodies?" But again, it's only a four-person department, and it'll probably likely have to go to five once we're fully implemented with the IT system. We want to roll out online permitting. We want to sort of roll out the 24-hour town hall model where virtually any service you need from the town, you're able to access digitally from town hall. You sometimes don't see a backend decrease in the number of bodies, because if you take the Assessor's Office, for instance, or the Clerk's Office, they still have to do all of the work that they have to do. So it's tough for us to get that body savings from automation, but can our systems improve? Absolutely. Can we get more efficiency to the public and more online systems and more digital systems? Absolutely. So there are resources available. We have a great opportunity to invest in IT as we go forward.
Thank you. Ms. Donahue?
Helen Donahue, District 6. I know that we need the computer system for the town very much, and I'm happy that we're improving it a great deal. But what is not good is the way that the facility was put on the top of the roof of the town hall. It completely takes away from the beauty of the town hall if you look from the town common. And I asked if there was a way that this could be fixed, and I was told Mrs. Conney did a lot of work to try and find out, and it would be thousands and thousands of dollars worth if her pay is. So as we go forward, I think it's important to maintain what we have rather than destroy it. And I think that if there's some way that we could get money from community preservation or some other way, that we try and fix all that stuff that's on the top of the town hall roof. And in the future, when we go ahead with additional programming, that we make sure that we don't do the same thing again.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Anything further on this matter? Yes.
Hi, Kathy Spillane, District 4. Could you just clarify the fairly dramatic increase for the data processing? Is that just related to the new system coming online?
Mr. Mazuko?
Yes, that's the first year of us booking the actual ongoing operating cost of it. That number will increase over the next several years. The $1.7 million covers part of the implementation, but we are next year especially sort of maintaining our legacy system for at least another year or two, as well as the cost of the annual operating system for the new accounting system.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote. 155, Information Technology, the total $993,553. On that, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next account, 161, Town Clerk, Mr. Slater?
Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated: a total of $296,313.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote. The motion for account 161, Town Clerk, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next account, 162, Election and Registration. By the way, before, Mr. Slater reminds me, the deadline for registering for the June 3rd election is tomorrow at 8:00 PM. The Clerk's Office will be open till 8 o'clock tomorrow for registration. If you're not registered to vote, and this is not just the folks in the room, because to be a town meeting member, you're supposed to be a registered voter, but the folks at home, you have until 8 o'clock tomorrow to register to vote, and the Clerk's Office will remain open for that purpose until 8:00 PM tomorrow. Thank you. Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by, excuse me, recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated: a total of $101,059.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote on the motion for 162, Election and Registration. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. And that has carried. The next account, 175, Community Development, Planning, Zoning, CONCOM, Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated: a total of $424,959. Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Slater?
This motion is a little bit different than some of the ones we've had in the past. This will combine several commissions and groups into one, basically, you know, one department, one planning department, known now as Community Development, and it includes costs associated with the Planning Department, as well as the Planning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, Ms. Haley?
I have been questioned several times.
Ms. Haley?
Mrs. Haley, District 4.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I've been asked a couple of times about this particular one and why these particular groups or boards were combined. Was, I guess, through you, Mr. Moderator, to maybe Mr. Mazuko or Mr. McQuaid, why were these three particular ones combined? Because there is a difference between planning and zoning and conservation. Conservation doesn't seem to sort of fit in that group.
Mr. Mazuko?
So all three are land use boards that in many communities are functioned as one community development department. We were trying to co-locate, we physically co-located the staff, ensuring that there's coordinated review of projects. We also wanted to make sure, even though it's a small department, we weren't spending money twice for the same product. We had some IT purchases and some equipment purchases that were coming up that would have been the ZBA and the CONCOM buying something that the Planning Board could also use and wanted to look at purchasing. So we're looking at putting them together to be a little bit more efficient.
Ms. Doyle?
Cheryl Doyle, District 7. I'm also on the Conservation Board, and I have a question on, there's a line item for $4,000 that was transferred to...
Can you, you know, could you see the line numbers in the margin, the left-hand margin? If you could refer to that, that would help us get to that more quickly. Thank you.
It says Trails Miscellaneous, $4,000. If you go all the way to the back of the book, bear with me, on page 8A5, the explanation for it is that maintenance conservation property, this line is projected to decrease by $4,000 due to budgetary constraints and reduced usage in this area. In future years, this line should be... In future years, this line should be allocated to the Department of Public Works who handles the maintenance. Right underneath there are, $4,000 pops up on Trails. The Department of Public Works doesn't do all our maintenance. When we have trees that go down from our property onto other people's properties, we have to call pathfinders to have those trees removed. A lot of our mowing is not done by DPW. It is contracted out. DPW has a lot to do, and we normally just get in line, wait on queue, and we're at the mercy of them, which we appreciate it because they always help us. But we've been basically wiped out of our budget. There's not showing anything for our dam maintenance or anything. Conservation and planning are two different things. Planning is all about development, and conservation is all about conserving land. So none of this was brought to conservation. This was just done, and we got wiped out. So now we're basically going to end up rubber stamping things, and we have no protection. We have no way to do our maintenance on things that we need to do because our budget has just been lumped into two other departments that have never, ever had a large budget. And we've always carried our own. And what we don't spend, we have always returned to this town. And I think it's very unfair that conservation wasn't put on notice. They weren't aware of this, and they just got basically stuck under another department. Zoning is not even part of planning. Zoning is part of the Building Department, and they got shoved over because the Building Department is the zoning enforcement. So now, it's not really saving any money, it's making things a lot harder. I get it, you want to share equipment and that, but you've made it much, much more difficult, and we're going to lose a lot of our land to development, and we're not going to have any protection to, for it anymore. Because you basically did not consult with these boards. You just went ahead and did it, and it's at our expense. And I think it's very, very unfair.
Mr. Mizuko.
Thank you. Cheryl, you know, you and I and Joe have actually had several conversations about this. Nothing has been wiped out from the Conservation Commission's budget. We've had some smaller line items that have been rolled up into other line items, so it's all still there, and it's all explained in the budget. You haven't lost any of your dam maintenance that is all still there. That conservation line from 39,000 to 35,000 has gone down because, other than in the FY19 budget, we're not historically hitting that number. In terms of the DPW coordinating the maintenance, you just hit the nail right on the head. The Conservation Commission, and you guys do good work, are going out there and getting contracts and asking contractors to do the work. The DPW should be coordinating that work because they have larger contracts, they have larger support staff, so we want to make sure we're getting the best prices and we're tying into the best contracts. So rather than have two different departments going out and getting multiple different contracts for tree cutting, or tree trimming, or mowing, or whatever it happens to be, we're trying to centralize those functions to see where we can save money where we can save money. So the Conservation Commission hasn't lost anything. Your land acquisition is still in here, your dam maintenance is still in here. We did reduce one line by a certain amount of money, and we did allocate money to the Trails Committee, which has been doing a lot of good work in the community, building out our trail network. So I understand your concerns, but you are aware of this, Mr. Di Maria was aware of this, as were other Conservation Commission members. It's just where we're allocating the budget to, to make better use of our resources and making sure that we're being as efficient as possible.
Follow-up, and of course, you're going to direct your question through me, and Mr. Mizuko will direct his response through me.
Yes, I will.
As much as you two would love to debate it all night, it's for everybody.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Mizuko. We were aware of it, but we were also under the assumption that somebody would actually come and talk to our board as a whole. Now, who has control over our money when we want to do something? Because we were told we don't need a treasurer. Mr. Banper has always been our treasurer. He's always kept us informed on where our money is being spent, what we need to do with our money and that. Now, who has control over our money? Do we have a say in it anymore?
So the short answer is, of course you do. The long answer is, sorry, Ms. Moderator, the longer answer is our new accounting system puts in a requisition requirement process that we haven't had in the past. So before, somebody from any department could just walk in and hand in an invoice, and we would have to actually pay that invoice. Now, before we do that, people have to put a requisition in, and accounting and the treasurer's office have to approve that requisition before we go spend money, so we have a little bit more control over it. So that way, if you have a bill for $1,000 for tree service, you would get the approval for that work done first. You open up that PO in the system, your support staff, which is Ramonda, would be able to take care of that for you. And yes, you still have control over expending those funds for their appropriate purchase, but all of our budget line items now have the requirement that the requisition be put in first, whereas before, we did have a system where oftentimes invoices would just show up on a desk, and it's, well, we ordered this work, it got done, here's the invoice, now you have to pay it. So it's a better control system, consistent with the new accounting system, and complying with the state's UMA system as well, for making sure that we're not overspending money or spending money anywhere we shouldn't.
Can I follow up, please?
Yes.
I know you, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Mizuko. He said that our admin, which is Ramonda, that we would go to her and submit, but we were told as of July 1 that Ramonda is no longer our admin, that she answers directly to Mr. Houkliotis in planning. So we basically lost the person that was our backbone, our everything, that allowed our board to function and function within our budget, and a lot of times with less money. So now we're just kind of like floating, and I'm wondering, are we just, it almost feels like the town is getting rid of the conservation. And I, and I think it's very, very, very important to have land conservation because of the fact we have so much wetland, and we need to protect it. I'm all for growth. I'm all for development. I manage commercial property. I hold a construction license and everything else, but I also think that land needs to be protected. The wetlands need to be protected. I believe everything needs to have a balance to it. And right now, it's like we're just, we're not there. No disrespect whatsoever.
No, I understand. So perhaps you've misunderstood. Ramonda still provides support to the Conservation Commission. She's been doing it all along. She's co-located with other staff and reports on a day-to-day basis to the Planning Director because everyone needs a supervisor to report to. The Planning Director, who's appointed by the Planning Board, reports administratively to the Town Manager, as do some of the employees appointed by the Board of Selectmen. That's how we maintain a normal span of control like any other organization. Her title has not changed, her job function has not changed, she's simply co-located with the Planning Department, with the Conservation Agent, because one of the other reasons we've made some of these changes, we were storing files in three different places in town for the Conservation Commission. We had Ramonda who provided staff support halftime on one end of the building, we had the Conservation Agent on the complete other end of the building. It doesn't make for good and effective communication. We support conservation, it's a statutory required board to have. We're just trying to be more efficient with putting our people in one place and making sure that they're working next to each other, reducing the amount of time they're walking from one end of the hall to the other. Conservation is important, we're doing it, we're just trying to be a little bit more efficient. You still have that staff support, but I need that employee reporting to somebody on a daily basis who's tracking when they're coming into work, who's checking their vacation time, who's checking their sick time, because the Conservation Commission doesn't do that. It's not a full-time body, none of our boards do. So it's just about having a normal span of control in the building to make sure that everyone reports to someone.
One last follow-up. Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
To Mr. Mizuko. No disrespect, but in the future, do you think that you could possibly come to our board and explain to what you're doing so we are not blindsided on what is going on with our board? Because we would prefer open communication. We would prefer complete transparency, so we know as an entire board what is going on, so we are able to still function, still be able to process applications, and do everything that we're supposed to be doing while protecting our wetlands.
Cheryl, I certainly agree. We have had this conversation, I've had this conversation with Mr. Di Maria, with Mr. Leach, I've had the conversation with the Chair, with the former Chair, with the two new members we hired. We hired a consultant last year to come in and address some of the dysfunction that was on the Conservation Commission. He had conversations with everyone. I attended several meetings after that and discussed with everyone, these are some of the changes we need to make because the Conservation Commission hadn't necessarily been getting along. My understanding is they're doing a better job of getting along now, which is good. So I certainly understand your point. I feel we've been pretty open with the members of the board. It shouldn't have come as a surprise to anyone.
All right. But I, Mr. Moderator...
Well, I wonder if now we're getting into, who's currently Chair of the CONCOM?
I'm Vice Chair. Our Chair is Steve Washburn, but he is not a town meeting member.
Okay. He's still able to speak to town meeting. You need not be a town meeting member to speak to town meeting.
Yeah, he does.
But all right. So I just wonder...
Okay, I'm fine.
This can go on, but should, should some of this maybe be a discussion at town hall among the interested parties?
Yes, I'm fine. Thank you.
And then, if need be, somebody can report back to this body, to the extent it affects this body.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Hall?
John Hall, District Six. Ms. Doyle talked about this in what I might call a microstatic current frame. I want to talk about it in a macrodynamic frame. The full title of Mr. Houkliotis's department is Planning and Economic Development. The other two entities that are in this group are there to put buildings up and see to it that buildings are good for the town and they produce revenue for the town. The CONCOM is there to keep buildings from being put up and to see to it that the land not developed is doing good things for the town. I've had experiences a few times in my life with other volunteer organizations and the like where two or three groups were put together in one. Sometimes they had very similar missions, sometimes they had partially overlapping missions, sometimes, as in this instance, they had what might be considered conflicting missions. And sometimes it was voluntary, sometimes it wasn't voluntary, but there was one thing that always seemed to happen, is that the more powerful group reduced, marginalized, and eventually eliminated the less powerful groups. That's not to say it'll happen here, it's certainly not the intention. I take everybody's good faith as, as given, but I think you're creating a dynamic that may not be in the best interests. I don't disagree that CONCOM needs a boss. We all need bosses. I'm just wondering whether the apparent similarity in the fact that they both deal with land is leading you to ignore an underlying more fundamental dissimilarity, which is what to do with the land.
Thank you. Mr. Patchakowski.
Randy Patchakowski, District Nine, also Chairman of the Planning Board. I think that having all three is a good idea under one umbrella. We're not, no one's trying to push Conservation out. It's a, you know, a good part of the town, but inevitably, anybody who comes before the Planning Board, usually, not in all cases, but most cases, will have some dealings with the Zoning Board of Appeals, maybe for a use variance or something, and will usually have to go to Conservation as well. So in any major project, an applicant might see all three boards, and that happens quite a bit. So having them under, in the same room where they're sitting desk, you know, next to each other, just cuts down on the confusion, the boards can work together more closely. I don't see this as a problem at all. I support going forward with it. No one's trying to muscle anybody in or out of anything.
Thank you. Mr. Di Maria.
Joe Di Maria, District Two. For many years, I've been a member of the Conservation Commission. The role of the Conservation Commission basically was set up by the state. The state issues the laws for how to develop lands that are environmentally challenged, whether they be wetlands or swamps or have rivers running through them. It becomes a very technical kind of operation. Every applicant that comes to the Conservation Commission does not only deal with the Norwood Conservation Commission, but part of their fee and their application goes directly to the State Conservation Commission. So it's a, so it's really not just a local organization enforcing local laws, but are, very importantly, they manage to enforce the state conservation laws. It is very difficult for a group to work for two leaders if, in fact, Conservation Commission's primary formation was through the state. Their loyalty must be to the state law, and it is very difficult to have your budget organized by someone who is not reporting to the same group. So I would really request that somehow we separate the Conservation Commission from the Building Commission, because they're not the same thing. They are the people that protect your rivers, they are the people that protect your wetlands, they are the people that keep your homes from flooding. That's our main goal, is to keep the water in the rivers. And to do that, it's very technical, it takes years of experience, and frankly, we get lots of help from the state. I don't know that there's anyone in town, except perhaps the town engineer, that would be of help. And I would hope that this body would see it clear to separate this group. And I'm not sure whether a amendment is in order at this point, or whether it's wanted at this point by the body. I understand that town management is interested in doing that, but look at the things. It's almost like having the Police Department run and combined with Fire Department, two different kinds of operations, but still in the same town and still concerned with safety. So please help the Conservation Commission.
Mr. Plasko.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Plasko, District One. With all due respect to the previous speakers, I think this discussion is out of order. The, what's before this body is appropriate money for different purposes, and here we're talking about how much money we want to appropriate for the Conservation Commission and so forth. I haven't heard anybody discuss, except for original question from Ms. Doyle, the amounts of money, what would be appropriate and not appropriate. The division of work, the division of departments and so forth, under our charter, is rested in the General Manager with the approval of the Board of Selectmen. It's not even appropriate discussion for town meeting as to who's going to sit where, who's going to report to who. That's an administrative function of the General Manager. You aren't discussing how much money you're going to give us to support those particular functions of the town, whether it be the Zoning Board or whoever, Conservation Commission. So where, who's going to sit with who, who's going to report to who, is not even on the table, in my opinion. The charter makes it clear, it's the manager and the selectmen. You're just, should be discussing the appropriate amounts of money for those purposes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. All right. Anything further? Mr. Kai?
Questions? Second.
All right. On moving the question, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those, all those opposed, please say no.
No.
It has been moved. We now move to the actual motion by the Finance Commission, number 175 Community Development, Planning, Zoning, and Conservation Commission. The motion is for a total of $424,959. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That has carried unanimously. We move on to the next account. Mr. Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the sum of... Recommended by the Finance Commission that the sum of $75,000 be transferred from free cash, and the sum of $348,578 be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated, for a total of $423,578.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Ms. Quinn.
Sarah Quinn, District Two. Could I ask why there's still money allocated for the Forbes Maintenance and Utilities?
Mr. Mazuko, do you want to check that?
Thank you. So, we have it under agreement, we don't know if we'll be able to close and transfer the property by July 1st, so we still have to assume that we're unfortunately going to be maintaining a building beyond July 1. In a perfect world, we'd be able to get that all wrapped up and sold, and sort of the check deposited into the bank, but as we went through the budget planning process, we have to assume we still own a building on July 1. If, for some reason, or not if for some reason, but assuming we're successful in going through the purchase and sale process, next year you'll see this amount being reduced, or you may be able to reallocate it at a special in the fall.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
I thought that we were mothballing it and not maintaining it, or...
So, this is the mothballed cost. We still need to, we still have some cost of the building, but originally, we had well over a quarter million dollars programmed for the utilities, but if the building weren't to sell, which again, we don't think that's going to happen as of July 1, we are cutting power, we're shutting it down, that has a cost to it, and then it's basically bare minimum. So, we'd probably reduce this number in the future, but this is the number to mothball it, and we're done with it. You still need to have a little bit of working capital, just in the event you have an issue with the building, or again, it's part of the shutting down process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on this? Ms. Homewood.
Debbie Homewood, District Three. I hate to look a gift horse in the mouth, but how did we reduce this down $140,000? From last year's budget.
What line are you on, please?
The last line, 278. Last year, we were, is that all Forbes?
Yep. Okay, it's Forbes.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Mr. Mazuko.
Yeah, that's Forbes Hill, so we had last year, or this current year, budgeted to operate Forbes Hill, paying for even the, the building isn't used too much, the electricity, the gas, and everything else. We're not doing that next year, so that's how it went down, is we just, done.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Lynch.
Ed Lynch, District Seven. How many, how many buildings is this municipal building?
How many buildings are covered by this account?
Yes.
Mr. Mazuko.
Yeah, it's mainly just the Town Hall facility, except if it's otherwise called out, so where it mentions Forbes Hill, and then we maintain a small line item for the OCC, just in the event we had to, I should say, for the old fire station, in the event we had to do work on that building outside of our lease arrangements. But the salaries, costs, the utilities, that's Town Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote. The motion with respect to 192 municipal building expenses, $423,578. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next one, 195, Annual Town Reports. Mr. Slater.
Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sum be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purpose indicated, $3,000.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote. The motion for account 195, Annual Town Reports. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next account, 199, General Government. Mr. Slater.
Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated, a total of $205,750.
All right, any discussion on this? Ms. Numi.
Kelly Numi, District Five. Just a quick question. What is this account, actually, and why does it differ from the account for the General Manager, 123? Why aren't those consolidated?
Mr. Mazuko.
So, many towns would call this an unallocated line, it's just for items that don't really fit into anywhere else in the budget. So, I'll give you a couple of quick examples. Snark is an association, it's an organization that helps folks with special needs that the town contributes to. You can make an argument that it goes into one budget or another, but many towns have an unallocated budget for this line. Some of these other items are just for general expenses that come up for the town that aren't directly allocated to a specific budget. The part-time salary line, for instance, that's something that spreads out and helps out a variety of Town Hall employees, departments. The outside consultants, sometimes you have a department that says, "We need to bring somebody in to look at something, where does that money come from?" The departments are usually geared towards having funds for their specific needs. The police, medical, and fire, we could probably move that, but that's actually in this line, as opposed to the insurance line, because the town directly General Government pays for police accident insurance, which is the equivalent of workers' comp, whereas our normal workers' comp portfolio is considered a shared cost. This is placed in here, so it's specifically a General Government cost, as opposed to a shared cost. And then some items, like Town Meeting, it costs $20,000 a year for Town Meeting to run, you could put it in the Manager's Budget, you could put it in the Clerk's Budget, but many towns put some of these items in what we, what other towns would call an unallocated budget. We just say it's general, General Government. The eyewear line is actually a contractual benefit, that is only for General Government employees, that's not on the school side. And just a quick note, that's actually an example of some savings, even though it's small, that we found by consolidating some of our budget lines. We were budgeting $500 or $1,000 in a whole number of departments. By bringing them all together, we realized the budgeted amount was actually quite a bit more than we needed, so there's a small savings there. Some of the commission supply line is for some of the smaller boards and commissions that have smaller allocations. The Historic Commission is an example, where these boards don't really have staff, they're not the Conservation Commission, the Planning Commission, or the Finance Commission, so it's just where do they fall? You could put the Historic Commission in the Manager's Budget, you could put it in the Selectmen's Budget, but generally, you need somewhere that's sort of a catch-all for some of these smaller, smaller items.
Thank you. Ms. Esco.
Thank you. Tony Esco, District Five. I actually wanted to ask about the Commissions and Supplies, 298. I, I'm a new member of the Historic Commission, and so I know it's in that budget, but in the budget, I couldn't find other committees that used to be there, so for example, I don't know where the Norwood Cultural Council is located, or, there used to be a Cable TV Commission, or Committee on Disability, where are those?
Those are all condensed into this one Commissions line, because most of those boards, they get a smaller budget allocation, they rarely actually draw down on it, so we continue to keep the budget lines open and go through the accounting process every year of manually appropriating it, and then unappropriating and closing it to free cash, so we condense them together, sort of consistent with best practices, and said, "This is a pool available for those boards," but the reality is, other than the Historic Commission maybe having one or two small projects a year that they pay for out of it, the rest of those boards and commissions tend not to actually have any items for expenditure each year. I think the ADA Committee has met once or twice since I've been here, and they're struggling to find actual work to do, so to speak, so they've kind of, they've even asked if they could disband, so that's where it was decided, let's condense it into one line, part of our process of going through, trying to streamline our accounting.
Could I have a follow-up, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
But how will each commission know what they're allowed for a budget? I find that a little confusing, transparency-wise?
Well, we still have the historic averages, which we could rely on, but it's a pool for those boards and committees to draw from. Again, other than the Historic Commission doing some picture framing every year, the rest of these boards and commissions are not drawing down much more than a few hundred dollars a year.
I think the Norwood Cultural Council, though, does.
Outside of their grant funding they may get, not directly from the budget, we can actually pull up the, Sue, can you pull up the...
I couldn't find supportive material in the book to find out which of the commissions were in there, I looked in sections.
We can provide that with you, but again...
That would be great.
As going through the...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Both of you, one at a time, please.
Thank you.
I can't keep up, you're both fast talkers.
(laughing).
Is this, this is, Ms. Bartlet, you're showing the, where the 7,500 comes from, or where it's expended?
Yep.
All right. Ms. Esco, does that help?
Oh, yes, it does. I see the cable TV is there.
And what, what page is this from?
In the couch.
It's not, it's in your spreadsheet? Okay.
It's not in this book. Is that breakdown in the, in this budget book?
No, we could include it in, in future years.
I think that would be helpful, because, by the way, this book has so much information, it's wonderful, and, and I appreciate it, but that was, I know it's a small amount of money, but it's, it's just hard for the commissions to know what they're working with, so that we can try to be kind to one another in using our money. So, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Howard.
Judith Homewood, District Three. I also would like to comment and agree with Mrs. Esco, that the commissions should be identified, and the appropriate amounts should go with the proper commissions. By the way, we just don't do picture framing. We have built a Little Red Brick School, and it needs a new door, and it needs to be repainted, and we actually had a book, which would have been in time for 150th anniversary, but since our budget was reduced, we can't go forward with it. So, we do other things than just picture framing, but thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, and that's a report that, I might say, when we call for reports, under Article One, yours is a commission, and some of the others also could give that type of report to let everybody know about all your good work. For next year, maybe.
Thank you very much, but we, we do have a report in the annual report, and we've had one in there for many, many years, so...
Okay, I know.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Donahue.
Helen Donahue, District Six. For the record, Mr. Moderator, the way that you conduct the meetings, a person asks a question, and then the other person who responds goes through you, so I think it's fair that all the parties on both sides have to do the same thing.
Well, anybody else on the matter? All right, we'll take it to a vote. Under General Government, 199, the motion is for $205,750. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. I must, Ms. Donahue, perhaps we can have a conversation, because I must confess, the sound is so bad up here, I don't even know really what you said, but we can follow up later. And hopefully, we hope that by Thursday, we might have speakers up here that work? Maybe, maybe not? Okay. Thank you. All right, the next one, Mr. Slater, we move on to another section, is that right? Public Safety?
Yes, we do, Mr. Moderator. First one is the Police. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated, a total of $8,324,644.
Any discussion on this?
Jonathan Kane, District Six. I just had a question, I'm, I'm looking at the budget, I see almost three-quarters of a million dollars in overtime, and my question is, does the police force need additional staffing, and if so, would that help reduce overtime costs that would offset?
Mr. Mazuko.
So, there's a, one of the things you have to understand about overtime, and what's particularly unique in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, is we don't pay pensions on overtime. Every additional body we hire, we have to pay a pension for, and that's roughly 20% of salary. We have a retiree healthcare liability that could end up costing us a quarter of a million dollars per employee in today's dollars, plus a family health plan is about $18,000. So, if we were to add an employee to try to reduce overtime, we actually lose out. It does become a problem if you're overstressing the force, but I would actually say the quarter of a million dollars for a force our size is actually relatively low. What it usually is, is when somebody calls out, you try to maintain your staffing levels. Now, we don't always replace somebody, so if we normally have a patrol field, a force scheduled of six, we'll go down to five, maybe we can go down to four, you're paying overtime. However, you have to understand, there's also a lot of things that we pay overtime for that are just routine business outside an officer's regular 40 hours. An example is when we have an officer at Town Meeting, an example is when we have an officer at the polls, when we have community events where we have officers, they're being paid overtime for those community events, and that's where some of that is. So, our police staffing is fair at best, the FBI recommends, has a recommended number, we're sort of at the lower end of that, but more staffing wouldn't necessarily reduce the number, because we're still going to be providing support for the community events, for things like Town Meeting, other places where you have a, a police officer. And I defer to the chief, if there's anything he or his staff want to add, or...
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Donnelly Matthews.
I have a motion.
Sorry?
I have a motion.
Please identify yourself first.
Oh, sorry, this is Julie Donnelly Matthews, from District Three.
And you have a motion to amend the number that we're considering?
Yes. Section 210, Police, and the item number is 585-100.
Wait a minute.
It's not on there yet, it's on the next page.
Say, what, what line number? I'm sorry, what line?
It's number 585-100.
Line number.
Okay.
In the left-hand margin, there are line numbers.
I know, it's not where I'm looking.
353.
353.
353, there it is. Okay, so...
It should be in your book, is what I'm saying.
It is, I'm just looking in a different section that has everything right now. So, recently, I've had an opportunity to speak to a bunch of low-income seniors, and I've seen in the packet that Mr. Mazuko passed out, that if the override does not pass, it would wipe out the transfer program, which offsets taxi costs for low-income seniors. Thinking about what Mr. Slater said about the need-to-haves versus the nice-to-haves, I do realize that this...
Point of information, sorry, wait a minute, but there's just a factually incorrect statement I want to correct.
No, I'm sorry, she gets to speak, everybody gets to speak, and if there's a response to correct something, you certainly are entitled to do that, but please don't interrupt. Do you want to give your motion first, and then, then you can argue for it?
Sure.
Because I think you're arguing for something, we're not, we're not sure yet what you want.
Sure, sure. Okay. In short, I'd like to eliminate funding for the new police cruiser, $48,734. I'd like to transfer $36,000 of that to the transfer program, which offsets taxi costs for low-income seniors. I'd like to transfer the remaining $12,734 to the Council on Aging to use for unfunded needs.
Do you have that in writing and signed by yourself and a seconder?
I don't have a second. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Brody will second it, he'll sign that for you. All right. You can then hand that up, if you're...
Why don't I wait for Mr. Mazuko, in case I need to change something?
Do you want to, why don't you speak to your motion, if you'd like?
Sure.
I was going to say, Mr. McQuade, as you go by, Mr. McQuade, take the motion from Mr. Brody.
Thank you.
He is the chief financial officer, so...
And I'm open to a friendly amendment from, from Mr. Mazuko, go ahead, Mr. Mazuko.
All right, you want Mr. Mazuko to answer a question or clarify? Absolutely. Mr. Mazuko.
The transfer program is not being eliminated, it was on the first round of budget cuts, it was restored. If we have to make substantial cuts next year, which if the override doesn't pass, General Government will be cutting probably in excess of a million dollars, it will be eliminated, that's for fiscal '21. So, for fiscal '20, the year that's coming up, the transfer program is in the budget.
But if we don't get the override...
The following year, we'll be making cuts, and that's been identified as a cut.
It will be a cut.
So, for next fiscal year, even if the override fails, as of today, the, the transfer program is in there.
I still want my amendment, my motion.
You still want, that's fine, okay.
I still want my motion. So, so here's the deal, right? I want the override, I have two little boys, but I don't want the override at the expense of my low-income senior neighbors. It's really bothering me. I'm talking to people out in the community, they're hurting, they're not selfish, they're, they don't want to vote for the override because they actually really can't afford it.
Remember, we're not debating the override.
I know we're not.
You're asking to take money...
I know, but I'm talking about something that would be cut if we don't get the override, and that's a need-to-have.
All right.
No.
Let's stick with, your motion is to take money from the Police Department and use it for certain other matters.
Yes.
Absolutely independent of what... Absolutely independent of what might happen or not happen on June 3rd, right?
Yes.
So, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Ms. Nomi, nobody is to speak until you're recognized and you have a microphone. You know the rules. Mr. Mizuko knows the rules. If I have to remind people, I will. You've made a motion, Ms. Donnelly Matthews. I want to be clear on it. You want to change the number for account... This is line 353, fleet replacement. You want to reduce it by $48,734, correct?
Correct.
And you want to take $36,000 of that amount and put it in the transfer program?
Yes.
And you want to transfer the remaining $12,734 to the Council on Aging for unfunded meals, right?
Yes, please. That is correct.
Okay. All right. So here's your time to speak to town meetings, explain why you want that done, but this is not a debate on whether we have an override. You're concerned about those items. You want them in this budget, not any contingent budget, but on this budget.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything, if you have anything further, I'm not trying to cut you off.
I'm concerned about low-income seniors. I don't think there's adequate support for them. I'm hearing more and more about it. I think these are two programs that are underfunded, regardless of what happens with the override. I'm hearing about it because of that discussion and I'm concerned about it.
All right. So you want to spend money not on cruises, but on matters that affect seniors?
I think we can push off the cruiser for another year. If you're tightening your belt, you don't get a new car this year. You get it next year. I understand that this is a scheduled purchase. However, I do think that we have certain sacred cows that are scheduled and we have other, you know, really dire needs that are not scheduled that we unfortunately are underfunding.
All right. Thank you. All right. On Ms. Donnelly Matthews' motion, discussion. Ms. Taylor?
Sorry. I have a, in Haley, District 4. I have a question about the trans...
Ms. Taylor?
Jean Taylor, District 8. I respect what you're saying and I agree with what you're saying, but it's not needed for this particular budget because it's covered for this particular budget. So I think that if something like this, you know, needs to be done next year, that's for next year. I'd kind of like to move on.
All right. Mr. Hajar?
Yes, David Hajar, District 4. I think there's a misunderstanding by the proposer of the amendment. Regardless of what happens June 3rd, the budget for transfer is what it's being proposed. It's not being added to, it's not being cut, no matter what. If something on the negative takes place on June 3rd, it would affect the next budget that you folks would be voting on. So you're proposing to basically double certain line items in the current budget year by depleting from the police department a need, not a want, and we don't need that to occur. You're trying to double a budget that doesn't need it. If there will be cuts next year to those line items, then that amendment should be considered or might be considered, but in my opinion, it doesn't need to take place now. You're doubling a budget that's not going to be affected no matter what happens on June 3rd.
Thank you. Further, lady in the front here.
Mr. Moderator, Amanda Rafi, District 9. May I move the question, please?
All right, moving the question. All right. This is only with respect to the proposed amendment by Ms. Donnelly Matthews, okay? All in favor of moving the question on that matter, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. All right, that has been moved. So we're now proceeding to vote on the amendment which would reduce line 353, fleet replacement, by $48,734, $36,000 of which would go to the transfer program to offset taxi costs for low-income seniors and the remaining $12,734 would go to the Council on Aging to use for unfunded needs. I may have misread what that earlier, unfunded needs. All right. On that motion, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. All right, the motion has failed. We're back to the main motion. Any further discussion on that? And a reminder, the main motion is for $8,324,644. Ms. Nomi?
Kelly Nomi, District 5. Question through you, Mr. Moderator, for Mr. Mizuko. So if you do out our expenditures on both police and fire, our cost per resident is higher in Norwood than in any area community besides Dover Sherborne. Could you explain to the community what we get out of that, what services that provides us and why that's beneficial to our community?
So on the one hand, we have an excellent police department and an excellent fire department and they're out there every day, working hard to save our lives and protect our community. So that's what we get for the dollar investment. In terms of why you see that per capita number higher, one of the things you have to remember is we have a residential population, but we also have to look at our daytime population. So we have a residential population of about 30,000 people and our daytime population is more than double that. So we're providing service to people. If you think the time people are commuting in and out of the community, there are a lot more people in Norwood. We also have a large commercial and industrial base compared to any of our surrounding communities and as a result, the fire department actually has to account for that in their staffing. If anything, we're a little, we're fair on staffing. Nobody tell the unions I said we weren't, but we're fair on staffing in both departments, but we have that daytime population. We have a large commercial and industrial base. We also do have pockets of low-income residents in the community, sometimes needing a different level or a different type of service. So that generally adds to the overall cost for providing police and fire.
Follow-up?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mizuko. I definitely appreciate all the work that all of our service professionals, especially our police and fire, do in the community. I do think they do a fabulous job. I just want to make sure everyone understands the value that we get out of paying what we pay for these services and what would happen if they went away. So thank you for answering that question.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
John Hall, District 6. I just wanted to add one item to Mr. Mizuko's list, which is we have some big highways and so there are car fire impacts on that, which many of the neighboring communities do not have comparably. And that, again, goes into our costs to be able to do an adequate job of responding to car fires on everything from I-95 down to the smallest backstreet.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Lynch?
Ed Lynch, District 7. I just wanted to give a shout-out to the impact thing. I think that's great and I appreciate that. And also, you know, it's like an eight-million-dollar budget. Maybe the chief could comment on a few things that he's excited about for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on the matter? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, didn't catch, this is probably, can't hear. Chief, are you able to comment? I'm sorry, Mr. Lynch, I thought you were done. If you come back, come up front and we'll ask Mr. Lynch to ask it again.
I was going to ask if the chief can say a couple of words that he's most excited about, some of the tasks that have been, he's done in it for the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So what does the police department have planned for the next year? Will we start with, you know, the routine protection of the community as Mr. Mizuko talked about? I get a pop-up on my phone every morning about the activity of the department. We take a look at crimes committed and arrests made. I think we had nine arrests just over this past weekend, but on any given morning, I get a pop-up on my phone that our officers have handled anywhere from 65 to 90 log events in a 24-hour cycle. We're busy. We don't stack calls, we can't answer calls, but we do handle calls one after the other. We're fairly busy with that. We do a lot of, another strand of the department is mental health and I think I've spoken a little bit about the One Mind Campaign, that all officers and dispatches have been trained in the handling of mental health issues and a third of our department has attended a 40-hour course in crisis intervention. I've found that our officers spend more time per call and most times those calls require two units, but we resolve mental health calls, very, very seldom using use of force and oftentimes complemented by not only the people involved, but their families. Spend a lot of time with addicted people. We're not only relentless in our pursuit of people who deal drugs, but we circle back with people who are addicted and sometimes over and over and over to try to help them get some attention, to try to bring our drug usage down in town and we're seeing some success with that. You know, so we continue to, we continue to battle, you know, impaired driving. We make about 65 to 70 OUI arrests a year. We're not only seeing OUI liquor, but we're seeing OUI drugs as well, particularly opiates and marijuana. That's caused us to kind of upgrade our, the training of our officers in their detection of impaired drivers, not just with alcohol, but with drugs as well. We also spend a lot of time on pedestrian safety, texting while driving. Our officers wrote 5,000 citations last year. We investigated 400 crashes. So we're busy. So with the staff that we have and the dedicated people that are on the department, we just aim to keep you all safe.
Thank you, Chief. I will note, I was at the annual dinner at Massachusetts Fire Association Thursday evening and the guest speaker, the keynote speaker, was Barry Scheck, who, among other things, is one of the most involved people in the Innocence Project. And in the course of his speech, he had one shout-out to a law enforcement officer and it was to our chief, Bill Brooks, who was recognized for his work both locally and nationally. So thank you, Chief, and you deserved it. All right. Mr. Kai?
Jeffrey Kai, District 7. Through you, Mr. Moderator. It's actually a question that my son asked me to ask the police chief. They were nice enough to show a bunch of us with Cub Scouts the building and he had a question as to the switch-over from the Dodge Chargers to the Ford Explorers and I was wondering if you could explain that a little bit.
Chief, you better answer this one.
There's nothing that looks more awesome than a Dodge Charger police car, but I've got to tell you that we are moving to SUVs. We're moving from Dodge Charger V8 sedans to not only SUVs, but probably a hybrid SUV starting next year. The, so every year, if you're not law enforcement, you wouldn't know this, but every year, the Michigan State Police run trials on vehicles that are rated for pursuit, pursuit-rated police vehicles. And the Michigan State Police trials are probably the best-known source of information for police vehicles. And this year, the Ford hybrid SUV outperformed most all models and it is projected to save money on fuel. The engine actually shuts down when you're at a scene, as opposed to now when the cars are constantly running and that's a problem with police cars, is the idle time. And so we are, the officers are looking forward to having a little bit more room in the cabin and actually to give them a little bit better vantage point when they're in traffic. They're feeling now in the sedans like they're lower than everybody and they want to be able to see in the vehicles, particularly on the texting while driving and distracted driving and so forth. And then lastly, we're really looking forward to taking a look at the SUV. I don't think they, they look as sharp as the Charger, but I think they're going to be more comfortable, they're going to be more roomy and I think they're going to save us on fuel.
Thank you, Chief. Anything further on this? Mr. Greeley?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Joe Greeley, District 6. Just getting back, not to keep hopping on it, but getting back to the whole concept of consent budget reviews. One of the things that I've heard a lot about, I've been a town meeting member since, well, a long time, and one of the things that we constantly hear is the fact that town meeting is a thing of the past and there's really no value that's been being brought by town meeting, which in the last 20 minutes, I think, I think we've earned our pay. We do get a chance to ask a lot of questions. Some of those questions borderline grilling. Part of those questions, some of those questions are duplicate questions, but one of the concepts that's truly impressive is the fact that we can call a timeout, we can recognize a department manager who's going above and beyond and ultimately, every person that comes into contact with that department, and that's just one of, all the department heads and all the departments do an amazing job, but we should be very proud, we should be very proud of our police, fire department and all the departments, but certainly the police department goes above and beyond. And I just want to thank the chief. And just one more thing, I do want to thank and acknowledge town meeting members because that last 20 minutes was pretty impressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Jack Taylor, District 8. Mr. Moderator, you move the question?
Mr. Taylor has moved the question. All right. On moving the question, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. The question has been moved. We now proceed to vote on the motion, account 210, the police department. The motion, $8,324,644. On that, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next account, Mr. Slater, 220, fire.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated. A total of $7,
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Ms. Slater?
Jerry Slater, District 4. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Just have a couple of questions and I don't think the explanation in the back of the book is helping me enough on it. One, no surprise, is the increase in substitution pay. The explanation in the back of the book says to be more in line with historical, but if I look at the historical budget, the actual numbers, it still seems to be substantially lower, so wondering what might be going on there. I will have a follow-up on a different item, Mr. Moderator, but I'll wait on that one first.
All right. Who's going to take that? Chief? Chief Maurice? Mr. Mizuko?
So I'll take part of it and then defer to the chief for specific questions. So the substitution line also, if you remember, is going to need to grow with the growth in salaries. So if you have a 2% or 2.5% COLA, we don't want to throw the line up any more than we think we need, but sometimes this line is always going to be a moving target. You can't always tell when there are injuries. You can't always tell when there's folks out. You also can't tell when you're going to lose folks to, you sometimes can tell a planned retirement based on age, but sometimes we're down to firefighters, sometimes it's four, sometimes it's six. So that's why the number's a bit of a moving target. We're just trying to actually appropriately budget for what's in there. One of the challenges we face is, you know, as most years, we're moving money into substitution. So every year, if we're having to move money into substitution from somewhere, it's an indication that it's probably not budgeted appropriately for what we're actually expending, but we can't always correct an issue like that in one budget cycle.
Follow-up or comment?
Yeah. A follow-up on that is, do we have any, any events? And again, as a town meeting member who's been a town meeting member for a while, when we start to see things going up in that substitution account, I think we all get a little bit nervous. So is there, I know that in the past, there've been some military deployments and folks in the academy. Do we see any of that in the coming year?
Mr. Mizuko?
Yes, we have, I think, four planned retirements in the next fiscal year and that's four guaranteed retirements based on folks aging out. You're going to have some normal retirement based on folks who don't hit the maximum retired, required retirement age and they're going to retire. So we're looking at between 10% to 12% of the department or more. And one of the challenges we face is it takes months to actually hire a firefighter. Part of this is the civil service process, but on July 1st, if I want to hire a firefighter, you have to call for a list. People have to have been on the list. You have to go through the process. It can take sometimes six to eight to 10 months to actually get somebody on the force. The problem then, usually firefighters have not gone through the fire academy. That takes several months and that's, if there's academy, you can get them into right away. Now, if we hire somebody who's not a paramedic, they're only a basic EMT and we want to send them to paramedic school, we could conceivably have a point where it takes us eight to 12 months to hire a firefighter and then it's two years before they're effectively on the shift providing any service for us. Part of that's just the challenge of the nature of the business and we're looking to make some other... to make some other changes to try to shorten that over time, but it's very difficult to hire, recruit a firefighter, and put them on the job. It's not, not like some of our other positions, we can hire somebody, and day one, they go in and do the job. It takes a long time to hire a firefighter, it takes a long time to get them trained. The entire time they're at the academy, we have to replace them. If they're in paramedic school, we have to replace them. They're limited in what they can do before they go on the academy, so sometimes, we still have to bring folks in to meet our minimum staffing level, and that all eats up to that substitution level. And again, I know that that number scares people because it is so large. One of the important things to remember, usually, if a firefighter does call out sick, it's a 24-hour shift, so it's the equivalent of calling out for a few days, but as you all know, if you get a cold, and that cold lasts a day, generally, you're out for a day. But in a firefighter's case, if they get sick today, they're scheduled, you're losing two and a half, the equivalent of two and a half days. And I said it earlier, but it's always important to remember, even though that substitution number is high, we don't pay pensions on that substitution number, I don't pay an extra health insurance cost on that number, and we don't pay retiree healthcare cost on that number. So, if we added four, or six, or eight firefighters to try to reduce that number, the amount you'd have to reduce it by to make it cash positive for the town is enormous, because that firefighter has a salary, plus their OPEB liability, plus their healthcare, plus their pension.
Ms. Slater?
Yeah, I do have another, I'm almost afraid to ask another question, Mr. Mizuko. Maybe this'll be a short answer. On the EMT pay, that's also another substantial increase. It talks about COLA and some other stipends, but it almost seems like a full FTE cost there. It's pretty extensive.
No, so what we're looking to do is to change the, contractually, we're changing the structure of how we compensate EMTs. We actually just got an email here, we lost out on an EMT candidate, because the way Norwood compensates our EMTs is based on their assignment, and it's actually lower than most other communities. So, a kid coming right out of paramedic school, when he can actually get them, is actually making a few thousand dollars less in Norwood than in other communities. So, we're trying to correct that to make sure we can get paramedics, because the problem for us, if we hire them as a basic, we've got to send them to school. The school itself is $10,000. It can be anywhere from six to 10 months going to that school, and we're paying tens of thousands of dollars. So, we'd rather try to pay a little bit here than recruit somebody that's a basic, and then it's $40,000 or $50,000 or $60,000 for that one person before they're actually able to work for us as a paramedic. So, it's just trying to spend a little bit of money up front and save in the long run. And that allows us to run our, we have our ALS ambulance, or advanced ambulance, and then our basic ambulance. We'd eventually like to run two advanced ambulances, as opposed to one advanced and one basic. That actually means more revenue for the town, or the tune of several hundred thousand dollars, but we also need to make sure that we have the paramedics to do it, and we've got to make sure we have paramedics coming in, because even if we didn't want to run that second ALS ambulance, that second advanced life support ambulance, the challenge we face is, if somebody's not a paramedic when they come in, to get them up to that paramedic training is incredibly costly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riley?
Thank you. Mike Riley, District 1. My question actually is on the ambulance, looking at page 1.2, which is the ambulance receipts list. It indicates for fiscal year, this current fiscal year, expected 1.484, and then next year, going down to 1.460. I wonder why we expect ambulance revenues to go down next year.
So, part of the challenge, we're trying not to maximize a revenue number, because that's one of the things that eats into our reserves. So, if we do a certain revenue number one year, and we say, great, we did that, let's do it another year, we want to make sure we're being careful about doing those, and ambulance receipts is one of those areas where it can fluctuate, so every year, trying to book the same maximum number, there's no guarantee that we're actually going to book that number. I would defer to Mr. McQuade for the specifics on the revenue projection, but that's generally ambulance revenues. One ambulance call could be a $20,000 call, so we could have a good or bad, depending on how you look at it, day with five calls that totals $100,000 in revenue, or you could have 15 calls where you're getting maybe $4,000 in revenue, because it's all based on the type of call and the type of service that's provided.
I mean, it looks like historically, every year, our ambulance receipts have gone up.
Part of that's related to raising fees, too, which we did about two years ago. And one of the challenges is, a patient on Mass Health or Medicare, we don't get very much money for, we get plenty of money for folks on private insurance, so as that mix in the community changes, that has an impact on our revenue stream as well.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Ms. Taylor?
Jean Taylor, District 8. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask our fire chief if there's anything he feels that we can do for him, and how he feels the department is doing, because he's sitting there so quietly. Did I wake you?
All right.
Yes, there are some things, excuse me, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Maurice?
George Maurice, Fire Chief. There are some things that you can do to support the fire department, which, the first thing is to support the budget that we've put forward. We work very hard to come up with those figures. There are certain items within that budget that are very important to me as the chief. One of the things is to increase our training. I don't think we have adequate training at the fire department right now. There's multiple reasons why I'd like to increase that training. I could give you one quick example, is that we have many, members of the department have been to different academies. Some of us have never been to an academy, because when we came on the department, it actually burned down. But we have members that have been to the Mass State Fire Academy, Brookline Academy, Brockton, Boston, so they've learned some of the same basic general knowledge, but it's not standardized across the members of the department. So, it's very important for me is to get that training standardized for all members. One of the ways that I'd like to do that is with the addition of a second deputy chief. Very important for me is to have that training given by an individual that is there at the department, Monday through Friday, consistently giving that training and standardizing it across the board. One of the issues that we have now, because we don't have a training officer, is that when we do do training with the crews, they're constantly being called in and out on runs. So, we may have the engine and the ambulance go out, we may have the ladder truck go out. So, while this is happening, the training is constantly being interrupted. When that happens, we don't complete the training the way it should be, and it's not being standardized across the board. So, that's a couple of reasons, items that are very important to me as the chief, and I think also, it will help us move forward, having that position with initiatives that we need to undergo, that we are not currently doing. I'll give you a quick example on that. One initiative that's very important to me is active shooter. I know Chief Brooks has been very proactive in dealing with that issue. The fire department, we're behind on that, and I think that's something very important to me and the members of the department, because we want to be able to protect the kids in the town. So, it's things like that that I want to move forward with, and make sure that this department is up to the year 2020, 2019, 2020, instead of being where we were in the past when I got on the department.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Ms. Howard?
Judith Howard, District 3. How many, what is the total number of firefighters? And also, how many are EMTs, and how many are paramedics?
Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, we currently have 60 members on the department. That excludes some of the administration. Currently, we have a total, contractually, of 16 paramedics and 20 basic EMTs. We also have other members that carry a license, but they do not ride on the ambulances. We're looking to increase those numbers, as Mr. Mizuko had said, to have a second ALS ambulance. Out of the 20 basic EMTs, there are actually, 10 of those individuals are at the paramedic level, but because we do not have that second ALS ambulance running, those individuals have to work as basic EMTs.
I see. Some of those members going to be trained, you know, like next year or this year?
Not of the current members that we have on the department, unless we go into negotiations with Labor, where we decide to possibly send two basic EMTs to paramedic school. But we're also facing the fact that on the civil service list, basically, the paramedics have dried up on that list, because when it came out, every community in Massachusetts grabbed those individuals. So, we're looking at hiring basic EMTs, and we will have to send them to paramedic school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Catherine Anger-Pier, District 9. Through you, to the chief. I'm curious as to the proportion of BLS calls versus ALS calls, and if there's an increasing need for those paramedic units, and that's why we want to have the second.
Could you repeat that question?
Sure. So, the number proportion of calls for BLS versus ALS?
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, as a former EMT, and if you are seeing an increased need for the paramedics and the ALS units, and that's why you want to move to two ALS units versus one basic one?
Yes, so we're, generally, we're at half and half. We do a total of roughly 4,000 EMS runs a year, so we're basically at 2,000, 2,000 each. So, if you look at that, many of those, and I don't have the exact number, of those runs that the basic EMTs are going to are actually ALS calls, but because they're not functioning as paramedics at that point, we can't use them. And there's two ways to look at that. One of them is, is that, yes, we would get more revenue for those calls, which is a good thing for the town. The way I look at it personally is that we are providing a better service to the people of the town. That's the most important thing to me. I'd rather have paramedics on scene treating someone, as opposed to basic EMTs.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything further on the matter? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote. The motion with respect to Account 220, Fire Department, is for $7,558,571. On that, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next account, Mr. Slater?
Building Commissioner, recommended by the Finance Commission, that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated, a total of $460,864.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Mr. Lynch?
Ed Lynch, District 7. Would this be the department eventually of the combination, perhaps of the, you know, the one town maintaining the school, all the building, no?
Mr. Mizuko, I think you're asking, is this the same as what, the building maintenance?
I thought there was a proposal of the, this is not it.
Mr. Mizuko can answer that, I think.
Mr. Lynch, I believe you're referring to the shared facilities department that we're attempting to put together. This line here is the building commissioner, this is the inspector of buildings, so the building inspector, the plumbing inspector, the gas inspector, so nothing to do with our facilities maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right. Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote. For Account Number 241, on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next item is 249, Public Safety, Building Maintenance. Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission, that the following sum be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purpose indicated, a total of $451,050.
All right. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote. Account 249, Public Safety, Building Maintenance. On the motion, all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next account, 291, Emergency Management. Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission, that the following sum be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purpose indicated, $25,800.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote. On the motion, Account 291, Emergency Management. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. The next account, Traffic Control, Fire Alarms. Mr. Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Recommended by the Finance Commission, that the following sums be raised by taxation and appropriated for the purposes indicated, a total of $159,400.
All right. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, then, we'll put it to a vote. On the motion, Account 293, Traffic Control, Fire Alarms. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. That has carried. Now, we've got through general government and public safety. We, next, will be taking up education, the school budget. It is 10:25, give or take. The school department will have a presentation when we take up their budget. I think they'll also have some presentation when we get to Article 9. Is that correct? All right. It seems to make sense to me that rather than start at this hour on this new and large and important department, that we ought to adjourn to Thursday evening at 7:30. Is there a motion to adjourn to that time? Motion. By Mr. Shea? Seconded by Ms. Herhan? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. We are adjourned.